Okay, so for folks watching the Fruity C developer summit, welcome back from our last break of the day. I'm here with Jordan Hubbard, who is hopefully I say this accurately, one of the founders of the Fruity C project. Just here to chat about kind of some of the early history and things that went on in previous Steve that many of us may not be familiar with. And kind of go from there. So, Jordan, maybe if you want to start by introducing yourself and talking about maybe how you came to be involved with previous scene, kind of how you get started working with BSC in the first place?
So, yes, I am Jordan Hubbard, and I am one of the three original founders of the free B S D project. Rod Grimes and Nate Williams were the other two. But of course, if you really want to, I think, be truly accurate, you have to include the three eight six B S D founders as well. So folks like Terry and Bill and many other patch kit maintainers. So that's actually kind of, I think, a good, a good segue to how it all started. So it's, you know, picture, it's late eighties. And you have BSD as a well-established operating system running on Vaxes, running at the core of some OS, which was what predated Solaris, which was essentially kind of a rewrite based on system five. But Solaris was really, was really popular in its day, and that was essentially a straight up BSD port to, to multiple architectures. As soon as evolving as a company, you had all tricks, which was BSD for deck or digital equipment corporation. You have my cat stepping on my mask, step away, go on. And so BSD was actually robust and commercial grade and present in quite a lot of products. And of course, it was the operating system of choice at UC Berkeley, where I also worked for a time in the eighties. So the only real barrier to entry for, for BSD as a technology, because it had been widely ported to all sorts of different architectures. And, and ninety nine percent of it, or, you know, that's a made up, it's a large percent of it, a percentage of it was already open source. The real barrier to entry was that it ran on expensive mini computers and mainframes. So not everybody could afford a Vax. And so three eight six BSD was the first truly open source BSD that filled in the missing pieces that you couldn't get from the, from the CSR G on their CSR G net to or BSD tapes. And they were called tapes because they were literally tapes you'd order from, from Berkeley, and they'd send you most of BSD. But not all of it, not all the low core stuff, the, the VM subsystem for a particular architecture. You know, a lot of the low level kernel pieces for commonly available hardware, like, you know, three eight six and four eight six was missing. So that's really where, you know, I think we have a lot to give Bill Joelitz and his, his band of three eight six BSD hackers there. They're just due because they, they broke BSD free into the PC space, which is when it really went mainstream. And so the three eight six BSD distribution went for a while. It was a massive stack of floppies. And I remember, I think I was one of the people hacking on the early installer that would allow you to, to copy your three eight six BSD onto floppies. Distribution and then walk up to a three eight six or four eight six and insert the first floppy boot from it. And it would ask you, okay, floppy, one of ninety seven done, right? Or whatever man was a large number. And it would just sit there and read floppy after floppy and copy it to the disk after formatting the disk. And then finally, at the end of all that, if you didn't lose a floppy disk, you'd reboot and you'd be into BSD. You'd be into BSD on the PC. And that was, that was really revelatory. Because again, until then, if you wanted to experience BSD as an operating system, you had to have a sun workstation and you had to have a box or a Tahoe or a pyramid or any one of the, you know, sort of mini computers at the time that ran or hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars in some cases. So now I can run it on something that I can buy at the local store, sits on my desk. And that's, that's really where, where we caught fire. And around the same time, interestingly enough, this guy named Linus Torvalds. So I think a research student at, in Finnish university had written a very simple kernel that just had two processes in it. I remember, I remember it. I downloaded it and ran it and it had two processes, A and B. And A would talk to B and B would talk to A and they would each print, hi, I'm here. And that was, that was where Linux was starting out, was just a complete from scratch. Hey, let's see if I can write a kernel kind of effort. So, you know, props to Linux too, because, you know, BSD had a huge head start. It just needed to be ported essentially to sixty six and Linux was complete from scratch. And I think that attracted a lot of people, you know, obviously to that effort as well, because BSD was, was well established. It was that, you know, it was your dad's operating system. It was a commercial OS that ran on dozens of platforms already. But obviously I stuck with it. And when three eight six BSD kind of ran out of steam, petered out. We started free BSD, the, the last few patch kit maintainers got together and said, well, we don't want this to end. And we want to continue this. And we love the centralized source model and we love being able to build everything from source kernel to all the user land. And that's when I got involved in, you know, the creating the ports collection and the packaging tools. System stall was really just to, to, to not have to put everything into the core, into the base of previous D. But still have a way of adding on all your, you know, your favorite shell, your favorite editor, your favorite compiler tools and so on. But still in a controlled way. And honestly, free BSD is still one of the few operating systems out there where you can, you can build everything from a source. You know, with one or two commands. That's the key thing. You know, there's wrappers for everything. The ports collection is essentially just a huge set of wrappers, twenty seven thousand, twenty eight thousand, however many there are right now, wrappers using make. Not my proudest decision, but it, it works, right? And, and it, you know, and it works pretty well, actually. So, you know, that's a pretty amazing that it scaled out to that extent. And you can make world, as you all know, in, in your user source directory for previously itself, the core. And that's still something you can't do in another, since Minix died. Really hasn't been another operating system where you could go and just build the entire thing with, with, with one or two commands. So I think that's why, you know, it still thrives. And certainly it's something I tried to do again with Mac ports when I was at Apple. And create wrappers for everything and create a robust, you know, collection of third-party sources and binaries, packages from one repo that you could check out. And certainly other, other groups like Tonda and Pip, you know, the PSF, you know, have taken sort of very much the same approach. Let's create a repository. Let's create a single source of truth with sort of different aspects and developer would be staple and so on. And but, but previously was one of the first to do that. So yeah, I think previous to it's and BSD itself has always been characterized by firsts. BSD was the first system to really support TCP IP, first system to have a virtual memory management. PDP eight wasn't, wasn't, didn't have a virtual memory. And the first long file names, fast file system, Kirk McUsick and everyone at CSR G did a lot of pioneering work with BSD. And so it was always my hope that that, that ethos, that mindset of both having everything well organized. So you can just step into it and learn just a few simple commands and do everything with those few simple commands. See everything, have all the sources there, have all the wrappers and be part and clone them. And that also doing innovative things at the same time. I think those are, for me, at least the two core principles that the Fruity C was founded on. So I think that's a quick history lesson. And I can turn it over to questions or we can talk about other things.
Okay, well, I've got a couple of questions we can use to keep going. So somebody's asked, I guess they were looking back at the one that over released time, which predates me. And they said that the first release they can see is named Epsilon, and they're curious what happened to Alpha through Delta.
Wow, great question. Honestly, I think Alpha two, Alpha through Delta were so bad that I don't recall there being any great appetite for shipping those versions. They did exist. But I think what it was, it was like one of those, you know, kind of rolling, rolling release kind of deals where it's like, okay, now we have a release candidate. Let's roll. No, that's not, that can't be it. All right. Well, we can't just reuse the same name because nobody, everybody would get confused. So let's bump, you know, let's bump a letter. So, you know, Alpha, Beta and so on, where, where I think, you know, pretty, pretty, pretty nasty. And don't forget, even back then, we supported a lot of different ways of installing it. You can install over FTP, you can install over floppies, you could install over parallel line IP, remember that? Using your printer, your parallel printer port from another system to send the media, it's way faster than serial. So we were also evolving a lot of the release engineering and the installation experience to try to make it accessible. Because again, if you couldn't install it fairly easily in a variety of ways, we were never going to get any, any user community built around it. So I think Absalon was the first one that we thought was worth actually putting on a CD. And I do have actually every single previous D version on CD to my left and still occupies a place on my shelf. So not that I ever unwrapped them. They're all still in the shrink wraps.
I have a similar, mine doesn't start until two, one, six or so, but I have a similar collection. Most of them shrink wrapped myself. So
I think I, I think I have five one point O CDs, just because, you know, that one's significant. And I've had, I started with more, right? I used to, remember, I used to walk around with boxes of free CDs from Warner Creek City Ram. And so I'd go to user groups and I would just, you know, I practically pit them in, pitch them into the crowd like t-shirts. That was part of our early arrangement with Warner Creek City Ram is they could sell it, we wouldn't charge any money for our efforts. You know, they could just make money on it, but they would give the user community a certain umpteen thousand CDs. And occasionally I'd pack those into my luggage. I think I went to the first European previous deconvention on, if I remember correctly. There's a place where we all hacked our Toshiba Libretto's to get fifty megahertz to seventy megahertz, you know, by soldering a couple jumper wires. Because the Toshiba Libretto is the preferred free BSD, you know, mini laptop of choice. But I bought, I brought boxes through the airport of CDs and then just the same thing, Johnny Appleseed, just here, have a free CD. So
So you have another question. Someone asked about Net BSD, because, you know, Net BSD started about the time this free BSD. So kind of what was your perspective on how that beginning, what, you know, the kind of the divergence early on and kind of, you know, how did you see them being different at the start?
Yeah, I would say that in some ways Net BSD and Free BSD were almost like the continuation of certain factions within the CSR G. Because, you know, for those, those who don't know, you know, CSR G was the original, I think, computer systems research group. Sometimes say people say computer science research groups. I've heard different academic expansions, but the CSR G at UC Berkeley was where BSD started. And there was kind of a, a, a part of it that I actually worked with in, in the early eighties, who just wanted to port BSD to everything. Right? They, they saw that as the way to, to being ubiquitous. So they were the ones who liked the early Tahoe port. I remember, you know, there were all kinds of Tahoe tapes coming out. Most of us were saying, what the heck is a Tahoe? Right? It was a pretty obscure machine even for its time, but it was one of the first, you know, sort of non-Vax versions. And of course, BSD ran on, on the PDP eight or PP eleven as well, right? There was, you know, two dot nine, two dot X. That's like a different fork of BSD to run on a, on a machine with no MMU. So PDP folks were running BSD, Vax folks were running BSD, because of course, that was really, really generous with their university grants back then. So pretty much if you were at university in the United States, you had some digital equipment corporation stuff around campus. So BSD ran on that stuff sort of first and foremost. And so, and that group within CSR G really wanted to run everywhere. The Free BSD folks, you know, came from the three BSD ethos, which is OMG, we finally unlocked low cost, easily accessible computing with BSD. And so Free BSD folks wanted the early, early, I think, project charter was in fact, we don't want to run on everything. We just want to run really, really well on one thing. And that was X eighty six. Now eventually, you know, and of course, Net BSD, you know, of course, it runs that BSD slogans, right? At least a joke, and that basically runs on your toaster, runs on your fridge or microwave. And it did supported many, many, many architectures. And Free BSD only sort of grudgingly got into the multiple architecture game. And honestly, I think that started with the alpha, the deck alpha, because we needed a sixty four bit validation platform. This is all back when Intel was thirty two bit only. And so the alpha was going to be our proving ground. We, we all know how popular that architecture turned out to be, but, but it was an important, it was an important milestone. And it was the first non-X eighty six port. So at that point, you kind of slowly opened the gates and said, all right, maybe Spark. Maybe, maybe Power PC, maybe, you know, MIPS. And so I think previous still has, previously still has kind of that, that tension of saying, how many architectures is enough? And what defines a tier one architecture? Is it number of seats, is it number of users? The amount of money it makes somebody, I, you know, it's, it's a, it's a tough call. Whereas Net BSD never had to make that call. Really, it's like, yeah, we'll run on everything. I mean, a case in point, I built a obscure PC, the PC is really the wrong word, called a PC five thirty two. And it was based in the National Semiconductor Thirty Two Five Thirty Two platform. And there was a bunch of us psychos, basically, that loved the National Semiconductor Thirty Two K CPU architecture. I mean, I wrote assembly for it because I loved the instruction set so much. And so I wrote the boot loader for the PC five thirty two in assembly and I wrote, of course, it was based on fourth, right? And I, I wrote the I O subroutines and everything in the assembly. And then, of course, we needed a Unix to run on it. And first we ran Minix for a while because that was a fairly straightforward port. But guess which BSD was willing to run on the PC five thirty two of which only a hundred and fifty of which I think ever existed. Mine being one of them, Net BSD, Net BSD ran on the PC five thirty two. They were that friendly to, to different architectures that they would even run on something as obscure and one off as that. So there, there's, there's a difference in a nutshell, right? That BSD runs on different things just because it can. And it's fun. Which is cool, which is cool.
For reference, in Fruity C, we actually removed Spark sixty four two years ago at NIPS last year. So someone
You made Warner Lush cry.
Actually, Warner is the one that got removed, so.
Okay, all right.
I don't think there were many tears when he did it. I think more relief.
Oh, yeah, man, should always shoot his own dog, right?
Something like that, yeah. Um, let's see some more questions. Someone asked, if you could go back and change something about ports in a major way, what would you do differently?
Yeah, I've asked myself that question several thousand times. I wouldn't have used make. I mean, again, make is such a simple thing to wrap stuff in, but I mean, make is essentially just a, just a wrapper on shell, if you really think about it. And, and so thinking of, you know, tens of thousands of semi documented shell scripts. The very simple rules engine that will run them in a certain order is not the, was not the most robust architecture. And, and, and the worst, the worst thing about that choice was that there was nothing that could be really machine parsed. So, you know, to this day, if you want to be able to say, well, I'm going to create a special port system that's going to, you know, like Pudra, which, you know, did, to, to its credit, managed to do it, but, you know, a, a much harder job to take a bunch of shell code and run it, you know, in parallel. And also no sort of the security implications of every single binary you're running and every single file you're accessing and just all the runtime behavior versus saying, hey, let's build a ports collection that's all, you know, in a descriptive data format. And then just have like a very simple, you know, DSL, which does the specialized things. But hindsight is always twenty twenty. And honestly, if I had set out to write that system, then I would have had to pick a file format and I would have said XML and everyone would have screamed and we would have had a huge fight about which metadata format to use. And then, of course, the set of primitives in my little DSL would be constantly slide exploding because, oh, you missed this case and this this case. And then everybody would complain that it was too restrictive and too limiting and too hard to, to, to write a new port. You know, to be clear, Mac ports, Mac ports uses Tickle.
I was about to say, Tickle.
Yeah. So every, every Mac port is a program. And so it's essentially just running code. When you build something with Mac boards and descend all the way through the hierarchy of needs, right? As you're building your, your big meta package or something, it's just running Tickle code. And, and I wrote a lot of the primitives in Tickle, basically Rossy for walking file systems and doing operations on files and whatnot. And we, and we avoided shell to as much as we could to try to create it all in raw Tickle so that we could actually instrument all the entry points and exit points from the Tickle code and trace it all and create, you know, big trace files to say, okay, what exactly did you do and why did you do it? But in hindsight, was that really all necessary? Not really. The, the homebrew folks went and just said, we're going to use Ruby for all the things and we're not going to instrument much. And their recipes are very popular on the Mac. So probably you could argue that Mac ports was, was over engineered and it used an obscure language at that to create all this traceability and sandboxing and it even goes down to the Siskel tracing and stuff on the Mac to figure out exactly what the port is doing. And again, it's nice for creating hermetic sandboxes, truly hermetic sandboxes and, and, and building your, your DAGs, right? Your build and run DAGs as you execute the port and its tests and all of that stuff, but it's a lot of work. It's a huge amount of work. So maybe I wouldn't have done anything different, right? Maybe it's just enough exposed wiring that everybody can understand it easily, the, the previous ports collection. Even though you can't introspect it and and yes, the dreaded Yaml programmer. So let's see, what else? I think Deb was asking about the history of Fruity C and macOS. So that's a, that's another popular question. When I joined Apple in two thousand and one, they had kind of almost finished the whole Darwin next step. macOS nine collision, because it really sort of was, I mean, a bunch of things came out of the old macOS nine codebase, like a open directory. And, you know, so the authentication system, the ability to speak Apple talk, the ability to use the HFS, right? A lot of stuff came from the legacy Apple codebase. And obviously even more stuff came from Nextstep, which is the company that Apple acquired. So two thousand and one, I would really have said that macOS was a combination of Nextstep and macOS nine or some of the code for macOS nine. And like an early, early sync up with, I think, the Free BSD four dot something, three dot something user land. Because there were, there was a lot of stuff in Nextstep that was pretty antiquated, right? I mean, Nextstep was another early BSD fork. I think it was created around the four point two timeframe, but don't quote me on that. Wikipedia will have a better, better answer than my brain. So Nextstep was an early BSD fork. So some folks at Apple before I got there had already done like a quick refresh and they grabbed some stuff from next BSD, they grabbed some stuff from Free BSD. They got some, some stuff from the attic, from all I could, we had man pages that like declared themselves to be, you know, all tricks and stuff like that. So it was like, where did this come from? So two thousand and one to two thousand and three or so, I would say, was spent in just cleaning up. And because I came directly out of the Free BSD project, of course, I synchronized as much of the user land as possible to Free BSD, if only so that I had a unified source of provenance, right? It's like the vendor branch, right? You want to have one vendor branch so that, you know, you can see all of your changes and clearly. So I kind of cleaned up the macOS vendor branch, so to speak, that came from Free BSD. But the kernel has always been completely different, right? The kernel of macOS is called XNU, which is acronym for XNU's not Unix. It's, it's based on, on Mach. And, you know, this is, this is early, a bunch of Mach folks from Carnegie Mellon came along with, with Nextstep. So they had their own ideas about kernel design. And actually a funny throwback there, before three eight six BSD, there was actually another BSD that ran on the X eighty six. But it was even harder to get a hold of and it was called Lights, all capitals, L I T E S. And that was Mach three point O running as a true macro kernel and a BSD single server running a process essentially. So all of BSD was a personality running outside of Mach. And I actually ran that and was part of the team that got exported to it and everything. So we, we actually had X eighty six workstations based on Lights. I remember working with Johannes Halander in the early days on that. So even before three eight six BSD, I was working on that. So of course, when I went to Apple, I came back and was like, oh, my old friend Mach. But all they've done is taken Mach three point O and, and linked it into the same address space. So they're not running the genuine single server model that Mach was originally designed to support, which, by the way, can you heard also supports. You know, the true out of process kernel, so to speak. And so, but the reason why it was merged and, and, you know, homogeneous kernel was created was just performance, right? All that messaging was, was a real overhead. And when we could definitely see it on the early three eight sixes that I was using when I was doing the lights development. Just slow. It worked though, right? But it was slow. So macOS is a, the XNU kernel, which is its own special beast, I O kit for numbers, all kinds of special stuff in there. Very, very Mach based still using Mach I PC and, and ports. And some BSD stuff. So I think the net code was, was cloned out of some version of BSD. So TCP IP is, but again, Apple hacks on everything, right? And they have, hack on everything because they have to, not necessarily because they want to, right? Running, make, porting macOS to iOS or creating iOS out of macOS was a huge engineering challenge and required massive changes to, to how memory was handled and a lot of certain power performance. So Fruity C is a component. It's a component, but it's not macOS. Very clearly not, right? Different, different kernel, different device driver model, different, different user land, but borrowing from Fruity C. And other sources. But we did at least homogenize the BSDs in there. So it is, it is mostly Free BSD for the parts that are open source BSD. And you can still grow, grab all that stuff from open source dot apple dot com. So it's just visible. Go check it out for yourself. Hopefully that answers that question.
Yep, I think so. So one question I had for you is maybe did you want to talk a little bit about cityram.com and getting involved with Warner Creek and FDP dot cityram.com, which in its day was a big deal?
It was, it was. Yeah. So, so, you know, picture me, I'm living in, in my house in, or my apartment, I should say. I went to the house there for, for a few years in Dublin, Ireland, working for Lotus, porting notes and Word and one, two, three to, I think it was seventeen different versions of Unix. So, so Lotus, Lotus put their Unix development group, I think that's what we were called in Ireland, as I always said, to prevent the, a, the Windows and OS two antibodies in Boston from killing them. Because, you know, ninety nine percent of Lotus was, was Windows and OS two, right? The early note servers were OS two servers. They actually ran quite well. OS two was a decent operating system that, you know, was pretty, pretty, pretty solid. So if you ran Lotus Notes, you had a note server running on OS, just a cluster of OS two machines. And then you ran your Lotus Notes client and it was, you know, sort of a fancy distributed database with a little language that would let you kind of write your own UIs on top of it. So we, we Lotus sold a lot of stuff to, to big companies like GM, for example. And every once in a while, like with GM, they would say, we'll buy X number of thousand Lotus Note seats if you also run on SCO. Or if you also run on interactive Unix or you run on HP UX or you run on, so you run on AIX. And so And so we became sort of the dumping ground for every possible Linux distribution you can imagine that anybody would buy a copy of a Lotus product for. So I'm incredibly frustrated at work every day trying to get our stuff to port to seventeen different Linux, uh, Unix flavors. This is all pre Linux and then I come home and I worked on an ISO operating system, which was, you know, at the time of Lights and then three H six BSD. And so I had a lot of computers at my house and a bunch of them were Amigas, because I'm also an Amiga fan. Actually have an Amiga five hundred, uh, recreation, just, I just ordered, uh, to run some little software on and and I went to my shelf thinking about how to get Free BSD more out there. And I looked at all of my CDs and had huge, this CD was a huge way of distributing software because the internet was slow, right? And not everybody had a, even a fourteen, four K modem. So I looked for the CDs with the highest production values I could find. And I pulled out the Ami Net CD, which was the Amiga Network CD and it had really nice artwork on it. And so I just opened it up, looked at it and I flipped it over and said, who made this? And I saw a little company, Walnut Creek CD ROM in California, and there was a phone number on it. And I called the phone number and a guy named Jack answered. And, uh, I know, I know John's smiling now because he knew Jack. God rest his soul, he's no longer with us, but, but Jack was the kind of guy who was just crazy enough to take a, a phone call at two o'clock in the morning. I didn't, I didn't quite calculate the time difference. So it ends up, ends up by calling Walnut Creek CD ROM, like, and it was after midnight sometime and Jack answers immediately, hello? And like, oh, hi, I'm some random dude you've never heard of in Dublin, Ireland. Who had just did a Free BSD one dot O epsilon release. And it's a Unix operating system for the PC and I would love to put it on CD. What do you think? Would you be willing to publish it for us? And he said, sure. And honestly, the rest is history. And in fact, in sort of one of the greatest, most spectacular corporate businesses of all time. We decided that we would create an FTP site and run Free BSD on it. David Greenman went, you know, I think, you know, built the hardware, designed it with as many, you know, scuzzy controllers as you could fit and, you know, F T C ROM, a couple of multiple evolution. So, you know, I'm probably describing one somewhere in the middle. But, uh, we, we, we ran it on the T one line in the corporate office. And by the way, we did a couple of releases with Walnut Creek CD ROM and it actually started to sell pretty well. And they gave us those, you know, hundreds, if not thousands of CDs to hand out at conferences and so word of mouth spread. And so it started to establish a pretty decent user base. So F T P C D ROM dot com kind of, kind of also grows and popular, also, also the place to FTP, uh, Cintel and a bunch of non Free BSD stuff. So I don't want to make it sound like Free BSD was the number one downloader there. There was quite a few collections of stuff for Windows and OS two and scientific and, uh, pictures, right? We never had all those different picture CD ROMs and had all the different catalogs, you know, the pictures that were free. So a lot of photographic, uh, you know, uh, enthusiasts were downloading these collections. And it was all running on a single T one line. What, one point five four megabits per second? Uh, and, uh, and it overloaded. It's, but there came a point, uh, I, at some point I had moved back to the United States because they decided, yeah, you know, Dublin's great, but and Ireland's great. I lived in Galway too. So, you know, lived in a couple of parts of Ireland then, but it's just like, I wanted to go back to Silicon Valley where I came from. So Walnut Creek City, I'm generally generous and said, come back and work for us. And we couldn't work anymore because the T one line was getting saturated. And so, and so, uh, we just looked at the latency, it was just terrible. It's like, oh, let's see the network, the internet, oh, and FTP site. So we moved it to, to a colo. And I remember, you know, how proud David was, you know, we got our first rack in a colo and he built F T P C ROM dot com there. And now we had all this transit and then it just exploded. And it became the busiest FTP site on the internet. And we broke records. What was it? When we, when we broke like a terabyte a day or something, everyone was jumping up and down like, oh my God, a whole terabyte. Uh, you know, which was a lot, uh, for the day. And, and the miss was that we, we, we missed the internet. Right? We were seeing ROM publishers. So we just kept working on publishing CD ROMs and nobody ever stopped to think, you know, I think you would pay to, to put this on a, on a site somewhere and have somebody else run it for them, right? We could have created the, the first CDN, uh, you know, a network of, of Free BSD machines and all the strategic colos and just kept adding storage and, and renting that storage out to other people. And I had a conversation with Bob early on about, you know, something like that. I can't claim that I had that idea exactly. And he was like, nah. Uh, so anyway, missed opportunities, but, but yes, for a time we were, we were, we were kings of the internet. With Free BSD.
So Peter, well, you know, had a question, I guess, he says, at one point Walnut Creek moved, the Walnut Creek office for Walnut Creek CD ROM, moved to a chicken farm? I'm not aware of what that is. Maybe you could provide some background.
I was, I don't remember that, but I do remember the chicken farm coming to Walnut Creek CD ROM. Uh, so, so Bob Bruce, who was our CEO, uh, through all of the Walnut Creek City ROM era, right? There was multiple chapters in that, in that story. Uh, mergers and acquisitions and things that happened subsequently, right? But, but for the first part, Bob was, was the proprietor and, you know, kind of, you know, set the culture. Uh, Bob would sleep on a board and a pallet rack. And what I mean a board, I mean like literally a piece of plywood and we would go and say, Bob, don't you want a mattress? No, it's bad for you. But, but Bob was an ex marine, so he spent a lot, he probably spent too much time in the Marines. And so he had a certain, you know, standard of comfort, which was basically, you're only on the ground, it's fine. And so he, um, he had a house nearby and he started raising chickens at the house. Uh, interestingly enough, I lived in that house for a little bit of time because when I came over from Ireland, I had nowhere to live yet and, you know, Bob said, hey, I got this empty house, come stay in it. So I lived with the chickens too over there, uh, and, and the pool that had turned into a biological experiment and a couple of other interesting attributes, but hey, you know, it was a place to crash, it was fine, uh, younger days. And the chickens went through several generations and eventually we decided that for safety reasons, the baby chicks should come to the office. So there was a room at the office at Walnut Creek C round that was the chicken room. And lots of baby chicks lived in there because they were safe from raccoons and stuff. And occasionally somebody would open the door of the chicken room and the chickens would escape. And so even chickens running around the office and nobody thought anything of it because, you know, it's totally normal. Did I mention Walnut Creek City ROM was an interesting place?
Uh, yes, it is. I was only there for a few years, but it's, I, I remember. I'll share because I shared on R C. When I came out to interview, interview is a interesting word for my first week at Walnut Creek City ROM. Um, during my senior year, uh, I stayed with Bob, so I, I got the full Bob treatment. Yes, it was an experience, that's for certain.
Yes, yes. So Bob is, is alive and well, living in Hawaii. So, so, yeah. Yeah, anyway, that's, that's the best, the Walnut Creek City ROM story. Trust me, it goes on and on. Interestingly though, I'll just point out, I met my wife there. So.
That's right, yes.
Yes, yes. I was, I was the CTO and she was the CFO slash COO and, uh, we were, we got married and we've been together ever since. Now she's doing something as we speak.
So one question we had, um, from someone is can you share your opinion on Grand Central Dispatch? And what if Free BSD can or should take from it?
Oh, that's a great question. Um, so GCD is, is definitely one of the things I'm, I'm, one of the things I'm proudest of in macOS. Cause it came out, it came out of the BSD groups. The BSD group is something that Apple created. Kind of for me, right? They just named it the BSD group and said, there you go, go and be in charge of the BSD parts of, of macOS and, and later iOS and, and TVOS and all that stuff. So, um, so the BSD group was actually pretty innovative, you know, if I don't say so myself. Um, and so we, we wanted to create a run loop for macOS. That was really where it started was we need to run loop so that we can do asynchronous events. So the reason I, I point that out is I think Free BSD does in its user land or in its runtime have to be able to do increasingly with asynchronous, right? In, in, in Linux, you already have debus, for example, which is one of the, you know, fundamental plumbing, uh, mechanisms. And a lot of processes are consuming events dynamically, uh, and doing things and generating their own events. And that's how the whole operating system stack works. Uh, but it's kind of a pain in the butt to program just to a raw run loop. So GCD took that early run loop idea and then we said, all right, well, we have, we need to be able to, to put stuff into different parts of the run loop because we also had multiple run loops. Right? We had to go run another run loop and then come back from that and then go into GCD because we weren't the first run loop, CFO run loop, I think was the first one. Um, and so in order to unify all those different run loops, we had to create a flexible dispatching model. And it was, uh, Dave Z's, uh, very, uh, smart idea, I thought, to say, let's take the queue, the fundamental, you know, notion. So everything will just be a queue. And of course you can nest queues, you can have queues and contained queues or queues could contain terminal objects to go execute. And because you can run things in the queue, uh, in a fairly straightforward way. Now you can have synchronous and asynchronous queues. So now you can sort of schedule things against a queue without a think or an async property. And, uh, you can also synchronize in an asynchronous queue, which just says, just block here until everything prior to you in the queue runs and then you're thankful. And so that and the nesting and the ability to flexibly have threads run these queues. And, you know, you can start even with just one thread and every queue is just a continuation, just, you know, at the very end of the queue, it just looks for another queue to jump into. And so it's pure tail call sort of, you know, continuation, uh, programming. But if you start getting genuinely concurrent, concurrent, if things start to block, you can automatically respond with threads. So I'll answer the question by saying thread handling is one of the biggest bugaboos in operating systems and it's not going away. Because you've got all these cores and you, if you do what I actually did, which is go to a video uh, or to, or you work in GPU space, you look into GPUs and you go, oh my God, it's full of cores, right? It's just, it's more cores here than I've ever seen. And so that you have to kind of start organizing them as groups and, you know, have warps and, but there's, there is like a huge multi-threading problem in the GPU space. A growing multi-threading problem in the CPU space because we're still growing laterally now, right? Moore's law is, is over, by the way. I think we hit the ceiling, uh, this year or we will next year. And then that's basically just keep going parallel. Uh, or keep distributing the computation. Oh, shove it into a DPU or shove it into GPU, shove it into another CPU, running another host with, uh, Rocky or, you know, something for really high speed transport. And you distributed shared memory and, right? When you get into HPC, all that stuff is just the bread and butter. And, and it's all clusters and machines. So should Free BSD, uh, adopt Grand Central Dispatch? I'd say at this point, the low level C A D I sport are nice, but I wouldn't use them directly. I would, I would wrap something else around GCD. I, I mean, I'd still support the C APIs just because they're, they're community, easy to use, right? And then you can sprinkle them through your code and make it multi-threaded without ever having to think about threading at all. Right? There's no explicit threads in Grand Central Dispatch. You don't think about threads, you think about queues. So we poured it, I mean, Robert Watson did a GCD port to, to BSD, uh, I think I hate him to do that, uh, when I was at Apple, I wanted another port, uh, of GCD as a reference. But, but that or some higher level cement, if you look at how Swift uses GCD, for example, it's, it's really, it's really implicit. Right? When you look at Go and the Go routines and stuff, right? There are higher level models and metaphors to consume now. And then you can use something like GCD under the covers. I'm just calling this, you know, it's like fifteen years after GCD was in there or whatever it was, right? But, you know, things have gotten more, more, more abstract since then. But the menus, you need a solution. Absolutely.
Okay, um, so have, have it as what I think I can, if I remember it correctly, I can ask you about. I remember reading a little bit about a story, uh, maybe something posted on Newsnet that at some point you had used wall to send a message in it.
Well, let, let me, let, let me move past that finally. Uh, yeah, yeah, it, it's on my Wikipedia page. Uh, you could read the gory details there. I don't know who put that story there, by the way, but it is true. Uh, I did our wall, the internet. What, what I think was actually more, more, more funny than our wall is the internet. Well, it wasn't funny at the time, it was a mistake. So again, look, look it up on Wikipedia, it's all documented there. But, um, is the fact that I think two years, there was a fictitious Olympics called the, the Newsnet Spam Olympics. Uh, it was written by some, some wit on Newsnet and, and he, he nominated me. Uh, or he, he gave me a prize in the Spam Olympics as the first spammer. Because I had put this, this text on, on, you know, tens of thousands of screens, uh, all over the world. Um, and, you know, obviously I wasn't selling, uh, pair extensions or anything. I was just saying hi. So it wa, if it was spam, it wasn't very commercially successful spam, but, but I, I was, I was greatly amused by that. It's like, yeah, okay, let's, it's a fair cop. I guess I am the first spammer, the first person to annoy people internet wide. But not the last.
So barely related, you may find it interesting. You've had several bug reports recently, um, from Robert Morris. Um, finding like all sorts of exploits and things, um, in Free BSD, like, like really interesting bugs, but.
Yeah, yeah. When he did his original, uh, uh, original worm, uh, I remember we called him RTFM for Robert T. Morris. Cause he caused a lot of trouble. A lot of systems got shut down. And I, I think it used a finger D hole as like one of its primary propagation mechanisms. So there, there were, I mean, speaking of our wall, there were a lot of services running at the internet back then that had no access controls. And that was essentially what I found was that, you know, our walling, a little message to the, to the broadcast group would end up running through every single entry and, and, uh, it's a host dot text. Cause remember the internet and that they had every host in your host dot text file. Um, and, and just to say, hey, hi, there's a message for you. And if you're running X, it'll go into the frame buffer and just, just write all over your screen. Which is what I did to the inspector general of the Arbonet, Dennis Perry. So, um, yeah, yeah, I got a lot of attention for that.
So another question, now, I've, I've a couple of different questions here. So somebody asked, uh, do you have any thoughts about the kind of generic? See, I'll read the question, you can see how you want to answer it. The generic sound kind of driver from, that went from Linux into Free BSD. Um, this person says in October of ninety three, it is still in tree as PCM. Although my memory is that Cameron Grant, like pretty much rewrote PCM.
Yeah.
That's quite the Linux driver anymore.
No, no, no. So I mean, I'm going to correct that. Well, so there were, there were two audio drivers. So remember, remember dev speaker. Which was a PCM driver for the speaker in your PC. Um, which by the way, only goes on and only goes off.
Oh, you missed, you missed a bike chat from hell about how we didn't have the frequency right. Like we'd had this longstanding bug and that's why the, the, the key beat was, was annoying. And so we could still leave it on if we fixed it to actually do the frequency. Yeah. This is like in the last year.
Oh, that sounds like the best bike show ever. Yeah. So, so speaker was really the first audio driver in Free BSD. And I, and I bring it up for two reasons. One, to give credit where credit is due, because dev speaker didn't work and you could actually tones to it. You could play music through it, you know, PCM music. Uh, it sounded horrible, but, but you could do it. And second reason is dev speaker, the source code for it, if you find it, is some of the most brilliant code I have ever read. I'm just going to say it right here in the public, dev speakers implementation blew my mind. Whoever, whoever wrote that, I don't remember that, uh, uh, their name, uh, was an unsung genius. Cameron Grant is another unsung genius who wrote, who wrote the, the real audio code. And, uh, support for the Sound Blaster and all the early, uh, you know, uh, audio cards. And what a lot of people don't remember or know about Cameron is that he was And what a lot of people don't remember or know about Cameron is that he was completely paralyzed. He had the same, uh, neurogenerative disease that Stephen Hawking had. So I went to visit him in the UK. And my wife and I, uh, went to meet him and his caregiver. And he was very happy to see us. He was in some really obscure part of the UK. I remember we had to take like two buses and a train and right, it was, you know, a, a, a lot of work to get out into these, this highly suburban environment he was in. But I remember meeting him and just thinking he was one of the finest, most amazing humans I had ever met. Because he had typed out, well, one, he was just a really nice guy. He was just really, really fun to talk to and, and, and his personality came through online. But he typed that entire driver straw in his mouth, typing on the keyboard with this, with his mouth. So when I saw that, I was just like, okay. You know, I, I can't even imagine how you did that. So yeah, Cameron, one of FreeBSD's early heroes, or another sadly passed away eventually from his illness. But, uh, but he wrote some great code and under the most challenging circumstances possible. So I would say the audio code has wonderful lineage of, you know, brilliance and perseverance in FreeBSD. But it doesn't come from Linux.
Okay. I will not repost people giving things to your, things you already answered. Your, people found the link to your spam award, I think.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, yeah. The exact message, you know, this, this is a test of area coverage or something. Reaching everybody Berkeley. Turns out it went wider than that.
Somebody had a question back to ftp.cerom.com asking what FTP demon was used that can handle that load?
Oh, wow, that's a great question. We started originally with it with the stock FTPD. But I think David Greeman done it. Um, somebody did. So I remember, you know, the one that, the FTPD that set the records was not stock FTPD. But now, now you've left me really wondering because it's sort of one of those implementation details, as you remember, like, oh yeah, we're going to have to do this, we're going to have to do this. Were, weren't, weren't socket, uh, or accept filters?
Not accept filters, but sin file, I think, was David, it was in file for his FTPD. And that was a big part of getting to the, the performance it got.
That's right. That's right. Yeah. Uh, so, so that was, that is a great example of, uh, uh, form, following function, right? It was, it was like, okay, what do we need to do to make FreeBSD be the very best uh, FTP server in the world? And yeah, that's right, sin file, but I, it's a blast from the past. Thought about that for a long time. Um, I think KQs might have also been used at some point to get to, to be able to do the multiple dispatching. Uh, because, because I, our FTPD was very good at, at running multiple requests. But you had to throttle, right? Because at some point you overwhelmed the scuzzy bus and now you're just, you're, you know, you're contending with yourself. So a lot of that, that stuff was tuned by hand based on feedback and telemetry and statistics coming from the server. So, yeah, in fact, I think David Greeman subsequently, uh, turned all of that FTP expertise into download.com. Uh, David was, was behind that. So he, he did, he, he got the message that the internet was a big deal. Took, took his experience and created that, that service.
Okay, let's see, um. I have an older question from a while ago, which was when you were talking about alpha, did you have a, like a general impression of the alpha architecture compared to other architectures you had worked with?
Well, you know, I mentioned earlier that I was a big fan of the national semiconductor architecture, just because it was so VAX-like. Um, of course, that, that architecture failed, but there's too many bugs in the CPU essentially. The alpha. I tried hard to like it. I really did. Uh, I mean, it, it, it definitely was a, was a CPU that did some serious flexing for its time, right? And again, it was the first sixty four bit, you know, sort of even remotely commodity priced CPU. So I think it deserves, you know, a lot of kudos for being first. Um, and it was certainly nowhere near as bad as, you know, some of the, the hacks that the X eight six was doing as it was evolving and growing. And, you know, trying to continue to get performance out of what was an eighty eighty six on increasing amounts of steroids. So if you're comparing it, I would say the alpha was pretty clean. Uh, but, but it wasn't as clean as some of the other CPU architectures. I like the eighty eight K, for example, that was, that was a decent architecture. So I'm kind of an interested nod. Any other questions?
I've asked on IRC, we're also at an hour. Now I don't know how much, I think that's about how much of your time I asked for too. So I don't want to take up too much time.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can go the full remaining three minutes, uh, but yes, I do need to, oh, here's a question. Did I make sure to back up my FreeBSD releases to the internet archival for long-term archive? No. I, I, I didn't do anything explicitly. Uh, you know, we just released the bits. Uh, I don't think anybody at the time was really, you know, posterity. You know, I mean, I'd have kept my old sixty seven Mustang fastback if I knew that, you know, a car might be worth restoring someday. But at the time it was like, ah, this thing doesn't run very well. So, so no, I, I haven't done it, but I'm sure someone has. It looks like, it looks like Dez has a comment, a question about ARM. I like the ARM architecture. Um, yeah, I mean, we had a little trouble buying it, but other than that, uh, I think it's, it's a, it's a solid architecture. And, and I mean, I have a lot of experience with it since Apple obviously invested in it so highly. Um, in fact, interestingly enough, I, I had an Acorn A five D machine when I lived in Ireland, which was also based on, on, you know, the Archmedes ARM processor, which was the early, you know, early days ARM. So I've actually been a fan of the, of the processor architecture for a while. It's going to be interesting to see, you know, how it, how it goes in the server market. Um, so obviously I think that, I think it's time for that, you know, that to be tried again. You've had some folks who've tried to make ARM server plays before, um, with, you know, less and more success. But I think, I think time is ripe to, to, to push that. So, and obviously, you know, Nvidia is a big part of that. So, so yeah, I like ARM. I like ARM and I think, I think it's going to be, I think it's, I think it's a huge success, obviously, right? I mean, it's, you know, it's everywhere. I'm going to, I'm going to take that opportunity to give a mini rant, which is, I would love FreeBSD. Love, love, love every single Raspberry Pi part as one of the default images. Because the thing that people really, uh, kind of miss, uh, when they think about ARM is it's not just all up here or all on your, you know, your fancy phone or your iPad, or which is pretty, you know, serious, heavy duty ARM CPU parts. Uh, and obviously Nvidia's grace is going to be, you know, even, even more impressive. But down at the low end too, is where you get parts until the chip shortage kind of screwed up the pricing for a while. Uh, where you can get, get a whole PC for under fifty bucks. And, you know, it's one of my personal passions to see computing spread, uh, in underdeveloped nations, right? And I was like, I basically would love anybody to be able to have a workable Unix system for fifty dollars or less. And then including the price of the SD card and, you know, go scrounge a keyboard and a mouse from, from, you know, from recycling uh, place somewhere and then an old screen that, you know, nobody else wants anymore and boom. You know, for not so much money, you've got a full desktop. So I've got a ton of Raspberry Pis on my desk. You can't see my IoT desk from here, my whole desk full of IoT devices, including all the stuff that Nvidia makes, right? And, um, and it's, it's awesome stuff because it's just increasing power so much with every generation. The Raspberry Pi four is, is a great little machine. It's, it's great. I mean, you know, I use a full blown Mac workstation, so I'm not going to use it as my personal workstation. But I run all my, my three D printers off of Raspberry Pis. I have the front end, pretty much every automation task I have at my house. So I want to run FreeBSD on those things. And I want to be able to get the OS instrument straight from the rasp, you know, Raspberry Pi website. So I put that challenge out to the FreeBSD community, if you want to run on something that every single person on the planet can afford. That would be great. What's FreeBSD missing on the Raspberry Pi? A full desktop with, with, you know, Minecraft and a few cool, you know, and Python ID and everything. Look at Rasp being, the Raspberry Pi OS for Linux is awesome. It's truly awesome because it's, it's a batteries included, everything you need to be instantly productive environment. It's got all the GPIO libraries installed, the ISCSI, Spy. Everything is set up to just be an out of box experience and we just go vroom. And so that's, that's the, that's the key part, right? Just aggregating all the stuff together and having a nice little desktop distribution for the pie. And it, and it has to be a desktop distribution because that's where people are going to start, right? Then you, you can have a lightweight version if you run a headless and they're like, I want to run a lot of my, my own pies. But that's, right? First you have to hit the goal of, you know, the full batteries included version and then be able to, to customize it and subtract stuff out. In my personal opinion.
So one more question from IRC. So I know, I guess you worked in genomics for a while, or I'll probably butcher that. Did you have the opportunity to, uh, use FreeBSD in any way in that space? I guess someone's asking, is there a chance for this to be further than a sequencer somewhere?
Nope, all Linux. And the reason being that, you know, when you go to their site or any of the big SOM vendors, your system on module, which you're going to put into a portable, you know, or a B six device, all the drivers, all the, all the boot code, you know, and all the device support is Linux, Linux, Linux. And that's, that's not really even such the fault of the FreeBSD community, it's the vendors, right? Calling, calling, you know, these various companies in Israel who produce SOMs, for example, saying, hey, can you support FreeBSD? Click, right? Is, is kind of a, you know, difficult chicken and egg scenario, right? I mean, they would totally answer your phone call if you represented somebody with, you know, some number of zeros on the check. Uh, then that's a different conversation. But, um, you know, getting FreeBSD into the, into the embedded world, uh, requires a lot of low level, you know, stuff. And, and ironically, one of FreeBSD's early contributors is, is Jacob Klama. And his, his company in Warsaw does a ton of that kind of stuff. But it's, it's mostly Linux because that's what their, their customers are asking for. But, you know, he's got the know-how to do it. Somebody, somebody wanted, you know, to, to, to put it on something. So, so we have for my, for my biomedical stuff, uh, I just lived in, in Linux all the time. In fact, Jacob, uh, worked for me for a while and did a custom Linux distro that was perfectly tailored to the SOMs that we were shooting, you know, nothing more, nothing less than what you need. And, uh, so if FreeBSD can figure out and crack that and create those customized, you know, tailor-made distributions, um, that'd be, that'd be cool. That would also, you know, take care of the Raspberry Pis and the, the other competitors who I think are going to increasingly try and challenge Raspberry for, for, you know, that sort of twenty dollar computer space. Um, and again, don't diss the twenty dollar computer. I mean, you look at the, like the Pi zero two and some of the later generations, they're, they're capable too. They have, they have a full on, you know, uh, decent memory footprint, they got Wi-Fi, they got Bluetooth, they got all the radios you need uh, to just, just be an internet appliance. I ran, I run home assistants and a bunch of things on Raspberry Pis and they're, they're just great. So, yeah. I would love to have FreeBSD on the SOM is the answer to that question. It just was too hard.
Okay. Well, I guess I have one more question that I have and then I can let you go if you. Especially if we're, we're already a few minutes past, so I don't know what your schedule is like.
Yeah, let me look real quick.
Okay.
Yeah, actually I don't have a hard stop, shockingly, so I can go get over.
Okay, well, one more question that somebody asked. He's actually one of your coworkers because he also works at Nvidia in a different part. He asked about our, do you have any thoughts about network performance on multi-processor systems? In particular, um, more recent synchronization methods like, uh, AppBook and FreeBSD or SMR, which is similar to Linux's read copy update. So kind of safe memory reclamation schemes.
Yeah, I mean, well, boy, that's a complicated topic. I don't know if we have enough time for that, but, but, you know, the, the RCU implementation is, it was a great example uh, of something that, yes, it's, and it's a linchpin of, of a lot of, uh, different subsystems. And, you know, you can get, you know, live, uh, a I RCU, like what it's called, uh, to do a lot of this in user land. Uh, but, but I think the, the more fundamental question, particularly since, um, Mellanox, I think still supports FreeBSD as a, as a, you know, a good citizen and, and has a lot of driver support, is how are clusters of FreeBSD machines going to talk to each other at high speed? Right? And, you know, low latency, high throughput, packing, you know, four hundred gigabit per second interfaces. And you're talking multiple four hundred gigabit per second interfaces. So that's the kind of, that's the world in which I live every day. Uh, so I work for Nvidia. Uh, so you have to do computational offload uh, at those sorts of aggregate data rates, right? If you're, if you're dealing with, you know, terabits per second in the aggregate. Are you going to do, if you're going to have your CPU do all the crypto? Uh, compression, decompression, because you want to get more than terabits per second or, you know, whatever, whatever line rate types of computation you want to do. That's a very fertile area for OS research. And, and that is absolutely where, where things are heading, right? It's no longer about your machine, it's about a cluster of machines. Um, and yes, certainly cloud will continue to have its role and you'll have stuff that's, you know, far enough away that you're not going to be thinking about things like Rocky or, you know, InfiniBand or, or NVLink or any of the really high speed uh, transport methods. But even talking into the cloud can, can, can involve some pretty high data rates, depending on, you know, the speed of your transit. And then within the cloud that you may build or rent or lease or whatever, you're going to have, again, as you're building these large, uh, you know, partition global address space applications, whatever, particularly for AI, right? You're going to have some, some, some serious data on your hands. So I'm not sure what the exact question was, but I'm going to read that as, is it important for FreeBSD to be cognizant of high-speed networking? The answer is yes. Absolutely. Because that's the bottleneck, right? There's multiple bottlenecks. But if you're going to put more compute power into a node, how do you get data to it quickly enough that the watts that it's burning are being constructively burned, right? That you're, you're just crunching through as much data as you can, particularly when you're doing training. Uh, and the answer is, hmm, that's a hard problem. You have to optimize a lot of different pieces of the problem to get the CPUs and GPUs fed at the appropriate data rates, because you're dealing with enormous, enormous training data sets now. Just getting the data into the, the code that's training. And of course you did that because, oh, half a billion parameter model. And I put that on Zoom. Hmm, maybe, right? Kind of starting to run out of headroom though, I'd rather put it on four machines and chuck it up. Uh, the parallelism between the nodes and, and how they're talking to each other. So RDMA, right? Basically, that's, you know, that's the kernel challenge. How do I do RDMA to storage? How do we do RDMA to other nodes? Uh, RDMA, you know, from the network controller to bring stuff in and out of the network fabric? If you're not doing RDMA, you're doing it wrong. Kind of, you know, I'm being dramatic to make a point, but it's, you know, seriously, I mean, at those data rates, you have no other choice.
Oh, I keep seeing one more question, but this time I mean it because it was, I have, there's a fun question in the chat here on Zoom from Deb at the foundation. She's asking, how many pets do you have? I can recall at some point, there was like a cat counter on your webpage when I first met you, like back in ninety nine or two thousand or so.
Yeah, that went out of date really quickly. Uh, so, so yes, I am now currently down to ten cats and five dogs. Uh, and note that I'm saying down to, uh, my wife was a volunteer at a pet shelter for a while. Uh, and that, uh, that meant that we got all the broken ones. Um, but they're all awesome. Yeah. I've got a one-eyed cat just running around right now. Uh, she saw her briefly in the, in the Zoom. Uh, she saw her briefly in the, in the Zoom. Um, and uh, so, yeah. Uh, ten cats, five dogs, and I think twenty-four coy. And that's currently it. We're actually on the downward slope right now. We're, we're trying not to, trying not to get any just focus on quality of life that we have. Okay, we've, we've had easily twice as many different cats. But, but, you know, you asked the next question, how do you handle that? Well, we have a cattery, it's all been built out to, to house the cats and they're all indoor only and they don't go outside and get eaten by wildlife. We live in the mountains, so we have a lot of land around us, the dogs can run around, not annoy anybody, so. We gotta have the arena. I wouldn't do this in an apartment for sure.
Well, thank you very much for spending time with us today and talking about all sorts of things. Um, and some early history stuff, so we really appreciate it.
Yeah, it's been my pleasure. Thanks for having me on.
Okay, thanks, George.
Later, folks. Cheers.
And for folks um coming to the summit, thank you for coming to our first day. Uh, we will start again tomorrow at about the same time. I mean, tomorrow, depending on your time zone, I know some of your folks are already in tomorrow on your time zone. Um, but several hours from now, we'll start up again for day two Friday and we'll see you then. Thank you for coming to our date and we'll see you tomorrow. Bye all.